April 26th, regular session of the Reno County Commission. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And first, order of business is pledge of allegiance. And then we have a prayer from Pastor Henry Flipson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Pastor?
Please pray with me. Eternal Father, we have just celebrated the resurrection of your Son. Let us be mindful that he suffered and died for our sins and rose to life, so we may have our life in you. We remember with thanksgiving your eternal promise to care for your people as we pray for our community. We give you thanks for your hand of protection for those working at the Haven Gas Plant and the surrounding communities. We continue to pray for those who have lost their homes in recent fires. We beg you to continue to shelter us from both man and natural calamities. Grant safety to all law enforcement, fire, and emergency and healthcare personnel as they strive to keep your people safe, as they serve and protect others in their line of duty. We ask for your continual blessings for all our citizens and services and industry who together support and strengthen our county. We ask for your mercy to protect industry, commerce, care centers, hospitals, schools, and churches in and around Reno County. We pray for all directors, staff, and the many county workers who carry out their duties as they serve the well-being of your people. We commend to you, Father, the leaders of the administrators of Reno County, especially Commissioners Daniel Friesen, Ron Sellar, and Ron Hurst. Grant them wisdom as they seek to enact fair decisions, protect regulations for the betterment of your people for whom they serve. Guide these gathered this morning in their work to enable your people, our community, and businesses to prosper. Your name glorified through them. Give us all wisdom to see your life-giving Spirit entrusted to us. Bless and guard our hearts and minds through Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Again, welcome, everyone. For a meeting today, we've got a couple early items on the chair's list here. First, we're going to do a proclamation for National Crime Victim Week. The District Attorney, Tom Stanton, is here to receive the proclamation. Tom?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have with me Julia Bryant. She's my victim witness coordinator in our office. And we're here to celebrate and to support the victims within this community, both of individual crimes and their families. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has a legal standing and protections that go along with it, and whereas crime victims' rights acts passed here in Kansas and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate in a criminal justice process, and whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights, and whereas victim service providers and allied professionals can reach more victims through innovative, trauma-informed programs such as telehealth services and multidisciplinary teams, and whereas victim service providers and allied professionals can increase access to victim services and compensation in areas that have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by inequality by implementing culturally responsive services, and whereas equity and inclusion are fundamental prerequisites to survivor care and survivor-led services that provide victims with opportunities to share their experiences are essential principles for support, and whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week, April 24th through 30th, 2022, provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime, and whereas the Reno County District Attorney's Office is hereby dedicated to helping crime survivors find their justice by enforcing victims' rights, expanding access to services, and ensuring equity and inclusion for all.
And now, therefore, as the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th through the 30th, 2022, as Reno County Crime Victims' Rights Week. And the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County reaffirms this commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims' Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. In witness whereof, we have heretofore set our hands and caused the seal of Reno County, Kansas, to be affixed this 26th day of April, 2022. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I would like to just announce, too, that on Thursday at 6:30, as we do every year, down in South Hutchinson Community Center, we will be having a service to support victims, and anyone from the county is invited to attend that. We'd like to have support from the community and from commissioners, especially what I'm thinking, Commissioner Hurst. I think he's been there every year for the last several years. So if you have time to come down there at 6:30 on Thursday evening, we would appreciate seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. I would encourage those to have some time and make some time to go down to this special event there at the South Hutchinson Community Center because it's an extremely meaningful service and very, very well put on and attended. So it's important.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurst. Next on the list, we have kind of two pronged item here. I think one is related to the gas plant explosion, and Adam Weishard is here with emergency management. He's going to give commission an update, and then we'll kind of go through that, maybe have commissioners comment if they want, and then Adam might introduce Barbara Nites from the SBA and some of the work she's doing with the fire victims. So, Adam?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Weishard, Emergency Management Director. So with me today back here in the blue is our new fire administrator, Travis Boat. He started with us on the 28th. His experience includes over 25 years working with Reno County Fire Districts, 16 years working with Reno County Sheriff's Office, 15 years as a pretty pretty EMS director, and then 14 years as a state-certified arson investigator. So his well-rounded knowledge of emergency services has made for an easy transition, and this position really played some dividends for us during this event that we're getting ready to talk about. So I appreciate him being here with us. On April 14th, at approximately 1:20, emergency services were dispatched to Nawa or Haven Mainstream Gas Plant, which was later referred to, at 13115 South Camp Road. This gas plant was located approximately one mile, a little over a mile, east of Haven. When dispatch sent this out, they told us that units were going to an outside grass fire. The units went en route, and they were told that there were some large flames coming from the gas plant. When crews arrived, they were met with flames, heavy smoke, even some explosions. Based on the initial radio traffic, we believe there was a very large fire there, and everyone from the plant had already been evacuated. There are two contractors that were on-site that were currently being treated by EMS, and emergency crews quickly established your perimeter. The National Weather Service actually called me saying they were seeing a heat signature from this plant on radar, and they wanted to make sure that we knew there was a large fire somewhere in the county. And then the State Fire Marshal's Office also called me saying that they had some explosions reported to them, so they made route as well. Due to the amount of combustible materials inside the plant, the initial evacuation zone was one mile in all directions. At this time, we didn't evacuate the city of Haven. The businesses were advised it was best to close. Schools should remain in session, but the school kids should not be going out to recess, and residents around the area should shelter in place in their own homes. We did not feel it was necessary to evacuate them at that point in time. With the heat, smoke, and flames, the gas plant personnel were not immediately able to access their shut-off valves. So knowing the current threat, additional resources were needed from the state. I contacted the county administrator and requested that the board declares a local disaster. A few minutes later, Randy told me that disaster declaration was approved. With that disaster declaration in place, what allowed us to do is contact the state and request resources from Wichita. Also contacted the McPherson County Fire Chief, requested resources from CHS Incorporated, as well as the city of McPherson. I was told Wichita, McPherson, and CHS would all be en route shortly. Around this point is when we found out everyone had been accounted for. The two individuals who had burns were transported to EMS to a hospital in Wichita. The crews were able to get in, shut down the valves that were further away, and plant officials were finally able to get into their plant and shut off the valves. The flames and smoke had significantly diminished. The sheriff's office was still on scene evacuating the area, blocking roads, and we were able to put a drone in there. From the air, we were able to see the whole scene, and we were able to see some office buildings that were currently burning. So from the command post, we were able to dispatch fire units to those office buildings and get them on scene where they could start cooling the buildings, make sure those structures weren't completely destroyed. The drone was imperative for us because it actually changed the tactics of the command post. They were able to see a partial structure collapse on that structure that the fire units were going to, and the command post was able to tell our fire units, stay out of the area or stay out from inside the building and make sure they're safe. So the drone was really big for us there. At this point, the fire seemed to be under control. Although there is still a significant amount of petroleum products present, we believe the risk of a very large fire or explosion was low. We began allowing residents back into their homes, and we talked to the city of Haven about a baseball game that was going to be played on the north side of Haven that evening. At approximately 7:00 PM, the plant operator stated that they wanted to do an intentional release of the pressurized gas. Said it was going to be loud, and citizens in the immediate area, including individuals of the baseball game, would be able to hear it. We notified the chief of police at Haven, put out information on our social media, and then also contacted the baseball stadium to announce it over their loudspeakers. The blow-off lasted approximately five minutes and started approximately 7:15, and the release seemed to go well. After the release, we started letting some of our first responders go home. Wichita, CHS, and the State Fire Marshal's Office were still inside the perimeter working. Our plan was for once CHS, Wichita, and the Fire Marshal's Office were done, we're going to turn the scene back over to the plant officials and give them the scene and just leave a couple of fire units there. We'd almost sent all our fire units home, and we requested that Fire District 9, which is the authority of Haven jurisdiction, have their, just monitor the area, and their plan was to stay there overnight and cut down some of the trees that were still actively burning the following day. At approximately 9:30 that evening, the command post was notified of a major problem. Plant employees were inside, and they pointed out a vessel that contained approximately 2,000 to 3,000 gallons of liquid natural gas that was still full. The vessel relief valves were believed to be compromised, and there were ice crystals seen on the bottom of the vessel. This indicated to plant employees that the materials inside the vessel were boiling. We were told this vessel could explode at any time. It could be anywhere from 20 minutes to 72 hours. With this new information, we immediately pulled our responders out, and we started looking at a maximum blast radius. The maximum blast radius of this facility of the hazard we are currently dealing with was estimated to be somewhere between 1.4 and 2 miles, putting the city of Haven inside that radius. I called the sheriff, Hudson Fire, county administrator, and notified them of the changes. The fire administrator began contacting all our county fire chiefs and our local resources to try to make sure we had enough fire assets on scene. We all evacuated to the carriage crossing parking lot and set up a command post there to come up with a game plan. Inside that command post, the decision was made to evacuate a 1.5-mile radius, including the residents of the city of Haven. We also decided to notify the residents in Haven to let them know what was going on and give them an option to leave if they chose to. Haven's mayor was present for those conversations. When the sheriff's office went to Haven to start the evacuations, we moved the command post to the Hudson Fire Command and Training Center on East Fourth to discuss our next steps. When arriving at the CTC, I called our IT director and asked for some GIS mapping work. These maps so we could see not only the homes in the area and the landscape, but draw some hazard plumes if necessary. He began immediately working on those maps. We needed multiple roads blocked that would take a lot of manpower from the County Public Works Department. Randy notified the County Public Works Director, and then Randy also called the RCAT Director to have some buses en route because there was a care facility on the north side of Haven that was also evacuating. The commissioner was present at the time, and he even assisted in typing a press release for us. At this point, it was all hands on deck. We were coordinating resources and pushing information out as quickly as it came in. I contacted the Salvation Army. They opened their doors to residents who were evacuated. We called all the hotels in the area and found vacancies. We passed that information along to the Salvation Army. When the evacuees arrived at the Salvation Army, they're instructed to go to a hotel at no cost to these evacuees. While the evacuations were going on, we were trying to figure out a way to mitigate the vessel. We began calling local experts in the field. One Oak sent one of the plant professionals to the scene, and as soon as he arrived, he requested drawings of the plant and the vessel that we were concerned about. He spent a significant amount of time studying those plans and the vessel, and there was a discussion at the command post about how the vessel was venting. Based on his knowledge and his expertise, we felt the risk of explosion had significantly diminished at that point. We worked on a mitigation strategy on how to keep our responders safe and our community safe while trying to allow the roads open and our residents back into their homes. After coming up with that strategy, we contacted IFO Group out of Houston and had a conference call with them. They're en route to Reno County, and they're familiar with the situation at that point in time. After explaining our mitigation strategy in a lengthy conversation, we decided to allow the fires to continue to burn. Those fires were actually taking pressure off the plant, which was a good thing. After that call, we decided to let our residents home at approximately 6:00 AM in the morning so they could get ready for work. We also opened every roadway. On Friday, we used drones to fly the plant again. This confirmed the mitigation strategies that we discussed a few hours prior to going to work. Crews continued to monitor the area all day, and at approximately 5:20 that evening, operations were turned over to the IFO Group. IFO remains on scene today. They're still dealing with a lot of petroleum products and mitigating both short-term and long-term impacts. Mitigation and remedies will take a significant amount of time, and I expect them to be on scene for the next couple of months. I believe we evacuated approximately 90 homes during this event, and it was a pretty good evacuation. It's always a challenge for us to evacuate our citizens, but however, with how great this risk was and the information we had at the time, we can think about it this week. We can talk about it all day long. We made the correct decision. I would evacuate those residents every single time with that information. To date, I have not heard any complaints for evacuated citizens, the ones who had to leave their homes late in the evening. Like I spoke earlier, the drone was imperative during this event. It really changed our tactics, kept our responders safe, and was able to show us from a distance what we didn't know or what we couldn't see. I'm not sure how we would operate if we didn't have a drone available. The county councilor came out on his day off and worked with us. That was very helpful. And then one group we usually don't mention is our media. Our media was actually wonderful during this event. They stayed away from the area they weren't supposed to be in. They allowed our responders to work, and then they were also patient with us when we were putting out press releases and doing media conferences. That didn't go unnoticed. That was good. Gambinos came out, fed our responders, and they've always been great to work with. They didn't charge us for any of the pizzas. Gambinos, I can't say enough good things about them. And then One Oak and CHS Incorporated, they both provided subject matter experts to us. They didn't have to help us, but they chose to. So the course of all this, all our county departments coming together, county fire districts, Hudson Fire Department, South Hutchinson, surrounding police and fire agencies, as well as our private partners, it took a team to make this successful, and it's going to be ongoing for quite some time. But I do feel the risk to our community has significantly diminished and is as close to zero as we can get.
Good. Randy, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Patton did a great job. Explain it.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Well, I guess it just amazes me the amount of work that emergency management of Reno County has to do. It seems like we always have something going on that Adam's department's involved in, and it seems to me that we're very well taken care of by our emergency management system. An example is knowing to call the people from McPherson that have some expertise in this. You have a mass amount of information at your disposal, and I applaud your efforts.
Yeah, I'd reiterate that, too. One of the jobs that I've found out being county commission chair is I have to declare the emergency, and I thought, oh, that'd be a rare event. I think I've done it three times maybe four this year already in four months. It's kind of humorous, kind of not, but certainly appreciate everything emergency management's When the situation escalated in the evening, Randy called and suggested I come out, and I got to witness firsthand kind of the live action of the event, both in Yoder and then back at the fire COC. CTC. CTC. Continue to be impressed, agree with Commissioner Sellers on emergency management of sheriff, Hudson Fire, Cedric Fire, was it Cedric Fire that was going to?
Wichita Fire.
Wichita Fire was adding some good help as well. And it was just impressive to see the process firsthand. You know, I did, and Haven Mayor was there, and I did, when Randy called me and said they were going to evacuate, I went ahead and called the mayor just to make sure he didn't need anything, and I think he was appreciative as well. Certainly a challenge for his community. The one thing out of all of this that, and it feels like kind of the reason we had to do what we did was some, it felt like a lack of preparedness from the operator itself. And I can't, I'm not an expert, so I'm going to leave that to the experts. But one of the questions I had for you, Adam, was are the, I'm sure there's regulatory authorities that may be interested in this event. Who are those, and are they looking into this at all?
So I know the State Fire Marshal's Office is looking at them, and then there's a federal regulatory authority that's looking into them, and as well as OSHA. OSHA is here. Something we're doing this week is we're meeting with all the gas plants that are still active, and we're meeting with them to discuss their plans and talk about some lessons learned.
Well, that was my takeaway, too, was it seems like we need to confirm that operators have kind of worst-case scenario plans, and I was, I think everybody around the room was surprised that we had to call in One Oak to help explain what was going on. And I think that doesn't, I think we shouldn't underestimate the efforts that One Oak put forth to this event, and certainly they probably could have easily said that's too much of a liability for them to even deal with, and they stepped up and came in and answered a lot of the emergency response questions that couldn't be answered by the operator at the time and saved a prolonged evacuation, I think. So I echo Adam's point about they did the right thing without knowing everything at the time, and better safe than sorry. So I appreciate all that work, and I think there should be some ongoing effort to make sure all of the volatile operations in the county have a plan. So thank you for that, Adam. Do you want to switch gears here and talk about kind of the post-disaster assistance in the Cottonwood Fire?
Yeah, so we'll switch into the Cottonwood Fire. Obviously, the Cottonwood Fire was a devastating event for our community, and we had a lot of homes that were impacted. Our VOAT, our volunteer organizations acting disasters, are currently taking care of a lot of the long-term needs of these residents. One of the things we found out is a lot of the homes in this area were either uninsured or underinsured. So a process we started through the state was trying to qualify for the SBA or the Small Business Administration loans. SBA sent someone out, the state sent, we did a tour of the area a few weeks ago, and we actually got an SBA declaration from the governor, and they sent it to the SBA, and the SBA is on site today. So their PIO, Barbara, is here with us this morning. I'll pass it off to her to kind of tell you what she does.
And Barbara, we're pretty tight agendas today, and I know we've got a press release going out, so please just introduce yourself in just a couple minutes.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Barbara Nites. I'm public information officer. So we're here today, as I was mentioning, for the Cottonwood Conflicts Fire that happened March 5th to March 16th. So anybody could apply during that timeline, or at least for underinsured, and we cover underinsured and underinsured losses. So the deadline for that is, for physical damages, June 21st of this year, and for economic injury disaster loans, which is the working capital loans, are January 23rd of next year. So we offer low-interest government loans for businesses of all sizes, homeowners, renters, as well as nonprofit organizations, and that includes also places of worship. So for homeowners, we offer up to $200,000. That's also to repair or place physical damage to your home. It's not including your secondary home, it's your primary residence and your primary car. For personal damage, for personal property, it's up to $40,000, anything that's inside your home. And this is where the renters get in as well. It's up to, they also get for $40,000 for personal property. For businesses, we offer up to $2 million, and that's also to repair or place physical damage, anything like inventory and also equipment, anything. And it's also, that's why I was telling you about the working capital loan. If you were closed during that timeline, at least you can regain your business back. You can have that working capital loan, which is economic disaster, economic injury disaster loan. For also nonprofits, it's also the same thing, repair or place physical damage, and also they do get also the economic injury disaster loans. So our low interest rates for home loans are as low as 1.43%. For businesses, it's as low as 2.94%, and for nonprofits, as low as 1.87%. The loans are up to 30-year, and we do offer mitigation for future damages in the future. We also offer relocation, and that's really the main, also cover deductibles, and there's no closing clause on these loans. So that's why we recommend at least see what your options are and see what is best for each individual. So the thing is, when you do apply, a lot of people don't know that, it becomes an option. You're not obligated to get the loan at the end of the day. So that's why I say just see if it's best for you, and you see if you don't want it, you don't have to accept it. So you can either apply online, a disasterloanassistance@spaa.org. That's why we have also the Disaster Loan Outreach Center at the courthouse. So people who do have issues applying online, they have that 101 assistance available to them because when they do apply, they can also ask for status, everything, that's all, any questions that they need. It's customer service. And also, we also have the 1-800-659-2955. So if they do have also questions, also get a paper application as well. So three different options.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, everyone. And if anyone has questions, we'll also send this to you digitally if you need it to get the message out there for everyone. Thank you.
And how long you have?
I'm going to be here for two weeks. We don't know exactly. Today, it's opening at 1:00 PM, and it's going to be 8:00 to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday after that. But I'm going to be here for two weeks, as I know of. But as far as the center, we don't know exactly when it's going to be, you know, when they're going to leave. So it just depends on people who need it, and we're going to stay as long as possible for that.
And Lori Moody's here.
Yes, yes. That's all.
I'm sure you guys can coordinate some press releases if you haven't already.
We're getting on it.
A few more, please. So that's great. So that's great, thank you. I think it would be worth us reach, I mean, there's 35 homeowners, it's not a huge list, so.
Right, right.
The extent we could reach out individually somehow, that might be worth.
Anything that you need me to speak, I will, I'm open to that. That's the purpose why I'm here, so.
We have a V O A meeting today. The V O A is taking care of all those on a case-to-case basis, so they have a face with their name, a case worker that's working with them. So we'll have that V O A contact everyone who is uninsured or underinsured and let them know that this is available.
Thank you. And just to reaffirm the point, you guys are physically available at the courthouse on the mezzanine for at least two weeks, right?
Yeah, for me, my case.
Very good.
But at the center, we don't know exactly when that's, when they're going to actually leave, so.
Well, appreciate the S B A's work on that.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any comments from the commissioners?
I have one question. Is a person who's already bought another house, are they eligible?
Bought secondary homes.
No, not. If they've bought a new home, or a home already that was, their place was burnt, are they eligible?
Yes, as long as it was during that timeline, they're able to apply.
Even if they have?
Yes, yes.
Or with all the buy-in.
Yes, yes. Just has to be during that timeline, they're able to apply. That's why it's in March 5th to the 16th.
And I would encourage the V O A people, the people who are responsible for that, to be sure and contact those who helped, because some haven't been contacted to say thank you for their efforts that they were out there. So be sure.
Yeah, definitely. No, no, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Adam, thank you. Okay. Appreciate the opportunity, you put a few things early on the agenda there, commissioners. Is there anyone here for something that's not on the agenda that would like to speak to the commission today? Hearing none, we'll move on to additions, revisions to the agenda. I might point out, Randy and I met yesterday, and I requested a few things be postponed. I think it's a good thing, I don't even know if we could have fit everyone else in here today. We have a pretty large agenda, otherwise appreciate the commission's consent on that. Anything else that would like to see? None? Commissioner Sellers?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll get moving then. The consent agenda is next on, on the list. How does the commission want to proceed on that?
I have none, I want to accept it.
You want to go ahead and make a motion?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as provided by staff.
Okay. Commissioner Hurst moves to approve consent as presented. I'll go ahead and second that. And then any discussion? Anybody have any questions?
Well, I'll just make the comment about item 6D. I think we're moving in the right direction to see a full-fledged plan for the Reno County shooting range, but obviously, this is, the budget for this seems to be growing. As I recall the conversation, when the two ranges split, that there wouldn't be a significant amount of money allocated each year on this. And so while I'm for sending out the request for qualifications pertaining to that, I still have some reservations about how much needs to be done out there at this point.
Okay. Let's see, Sheriff Sierra, would you rather have that question answered later?
I don't know that I have any questions of the sheriff, it's just a matter of budget.
I agree.
Okay. Well, Sheriff said he's always available for questions. You're welcome to speak if you want to, but it doesn't sound like there's a particular question either, so. Thank you, Commissioner Sellers. Any other items before I, roll call? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Next on the agenda, we have budget presentations from a number of groups here. Appreciate everybody being here today, just for presentation purposes, that you can state your name, who you're with. We do have your written presentation, and we have reviewed it. And so don't feel like you need to read the whole thing again to sit the highlights. I think we're generally interested in, you know, any changes, any budget numbers, et cetera.
Great. Mr. Friesen. Tony Finley, Hutchinson Recreation Commission here for the Arts and Humanities funding. Hutch Rec assumed operations of Arts and Humanities in early fall 2019. The first board meeting of the new council appointed by the city and the county was January of 2020. Had two meetings, and then the world turned upside down. Spent that time really putting together a plan, assessing the needs of the community in regards to, to the funding that comes from the county. We're happy to report that that money gets turned right back into the community. I brought with me a summary budget that shows the funding partners for, for this work. And I think it is important to note that this, the $7,000 from the county was in place for a long period of time prior to 2019. I'm not sure how, how long it was in place, but I know a significant amount of time that the $7,000 comes there. Primarily, the $7,000 from the county is crucial to the farmer's market Thursday and community requests that come in throughout the year. We utilize these funds to support the entertainment and music at those, those events, specifically Thursday and the farmer's market. The community, the $6,000 for community requests, examples of that would be the Arts Center does an art fair, the Fairgrounds every year. We support that with music entertainment funding. The good folks at Emancipation Day Committee, their concert that they have for that, for that event is supported by Arts and Humanities as well. So happy to stand for any questions specific to the $7,000 on Arts and Humanities funding.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions on Arts and Humanities?
I really think that the extra music that's provided at the farmer's markets are a real plus.
Great. Want to keep moving? Are you on 7B2?
Appears I am. So this is a, this is a new, new request. The funding for Parks and Recreation, a special alcohol tax, has been in existence for, Randy might be able to tell you how long that it's there. We've never had to formally come and ask that. I know that gets, that funding gets dispersed between other entities in addition to Hutch Rec. I believe our share is roughly between $10,000, $11,000 a year. The intent of that special tax is to put back into youth programs in the communities. And you can see there, across our divisions, our youth programming is everything we do. You know, every division has, has a component of that. So happy to stand for any questions, since this is new. I wasn't exactly sure what you wanted to hear on this, but, but happy to answer any questions on, on that.
Commissioner Sellers?
I don't have any questions on the request. I guess I'd like to just suggest to the other commissioners that Reno County budgets very, very little money for parks, recreation, and humanities. If we look at other counties and all, they're much more involved in the process. I think as time goes on, our county should be more involved in parks and recreation and law.
Commissioner Hurst? I, I agree with Commissioner Sellers. I think it's an important value add for a growing and competitive community, so appreciate the request there. And I think we're, we're here today to listen, and County Ministry is going to give us a report back. I should have said that at the beginning, but thank you for your presentation, Tony.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have Emergency Medical Services.
Good morning, Commissioner. Maybe the presentation. If not, just, I can go off the script here. Well, good morning, commissioners. Dave Johnston, EMS chief for Reno County EMS. Today, I'm here to discuss the budget request we've put forward. I'll be short and concise in the request.
Dave, I do have it. I'm sorry.
Excellent.
If you want to, and I have a clicker over here if you want to do that.
So I'm going to give a high-level overview of the budget request and give just some of the high points of increases that we're going to discuss in it. All done?
I have to turn it on on the side.
So I want to give a high-level overview of some trends that have occurred, looking back over the past five years. We continue to see a continuation in increasing overall call volume and in our transports. We look back over the past five years, we're up almost 26% in our total call volume, and about 15% in overall transports. And what I wanted to highlight next is that that trend is continuing. We already look into the first quarter of this year, we're already up 10% on call volume and about 13% on overall transports. So as we move forward, I wanted to outline how the budget was developed, and this is working with the finance team at H R M C and myself. As we looked at call volume, I've given a conservative estimate of about a 4% total call volume increase. And you see, we're already on track to higher in that, to higher in that this year already. With that, we're looking at hopefully a 4% increase in gross revenues. We have some things coming down the line, like some increases in some specific rates that should help with those revenue increases. The operating expenses, they are up 5.2% in this budget, and capital expenditures, they're up 5.6%. And it says decrease on the slide, but it's a 5.6% increase. Overall operating deficit, we're looking for funding, is about a 6.7% increase. I'll real quickly go through some of the high points on the slide here on the budget that you should have, outlining the areas where we are looking to increase. The first one is in those overall operational increases, we're looking at to help stabilize our salaries. So much like the rest of the county, we are experiencing retention and recruitment issues, looking to bring our salaries in line with surrounding communities so we can be competitive in the job market. That looks like a 6% increase in our salaries to try and offset those increases there. Additionally, operating costs, I have substantially bumped up our medical supply, almost 30% in the area of fuel. With the supply issues, also fuel, I just kind of went on the high side with those. If they continue on, on the pace they're on, I'll give an example. We consume around 1,700 gallons of fuel a month in that, so we're looking at almost a $20,000 increase in fuel cost over last year, just with the recent increases in fuel. Other areas that we're looking for increase is outlined in the capital. This is addressed at looking at adding an additional unit. That request is also submitted through ARPA, so we're, that could be a potential decrease. This is one of the last units that we really need to, to replace in the fleet. You told me the design line. The one slide I wanted you to pay particular attention to, and it's a table that's outlined on the second page of the budget that's been presented, is to show that we are being diligent with the funds we've given. And I've given a comparison to like-sized agencies in Kansas, comparisons with Butler County and Riley County EMS. You'll notice at the top of that, our call volume is substantially higher. We're at about 8,200 calls. I broke it down, the highlighted line is looking at the total tax support they're asking out of our operating budget. We're asking for about 44%. We're, we are pretty good at collecting what we can out of it, so we're maximizing our revenue collections, but still, we need to be, our operational deficit needs to be supplemented by tax by approximately 44%. We look at comparable counties, 50% of Butler County and upwards of 69% in Riley County. With that, I'll stand for questions that you might have.
Commissioner Hurst?
I do appreciate the monthly meetings, or almost monthly meetings that we have with the hospital and the emergency service to keep up to date for the county coordinator and county commissioner.
Well, I appreciate Dave's chart on our tax support versus other counties of similar size. I think that's very good information to have in here. As far as collection from your users, remind me, it seemed like a couple years ago, your agency made a conscientious effort to do more collecting than was prior done. Has that shown results? It must have to show these numbers.
It has. So when I first came in, we were around about a 45, 50-day marker on sending things off to bill. We've turned that around, we're billing typically yesterday's call. And when we're more efficient with that, we're likely to collect more. There's also been some increases. I have a report, the governor in office approved their budget. We should see an increase in our Medicaid rate. This isn't Medicaid expansion, this is actually just looking at a rate that's been neglected for, for many years. So that, that should be a nice bump into our revenues also. So we are working diligently, trying to, to collect the revenues that were wrote.
Thank you. Dave, thank you for your presentation. I have a couple questions. This is probably a dumb question, but why don't, why wouldn't we just increase the price to fulfill the deficit?
Well, so we do increase the price typically annually, about a 2%, 3%. The problem that most of our reimburse, reimbursements are capitated. So Medicare, Medicaid, we are not going to get any more than what they allow us. We may bill, as an example, we may bill $1,200, they're only going to pay us $400 out of that. And that's one that we've worked on with Medicaid, we've been able to increase that slightly. On some of our non-emergency calls, we were only being reimbursed $70 by Medicaid. We've increased that to probably around 200. So, so that's why rates do affect some. There are some commercial insurances that do give a percentage of what we bill, and so increasing the rates will help with those percentages, but none of them are at 100%.
Is that something you negotiate with the government on, or do they just have a set rate, or how does that work?
We, we make many requests to the government through, I work with the state organization, K M S A, and we may work through the national organizations to try and ask for rate increase. But as an example, I'll give you Medicare this year, they did give a 5% increase, but they came back in, I think, February, and came back now, they're holding an additional 2% of that back. So we're somewhat at the mercy of what the government decides on those rates. The commercial rates, they are able to negotiate those rates. The hospital does a fine job of trying to negotiate those with the commercial carriers.
The, so, you know, I, obviously, I think your service to the community is absolutely critical and valuable, and thank you for that, and all of the people that are on your team and, you know, go out in all and any conditions and save lives every day. So thank you for that. I, you know, putting that aside and just looking at kind of... I, you know, putting that aside and just looking at kind of the, kind of the economics behind all of this, and like, one of the things that I don't, I don't like about the structure we have today is it's, you know, I absolutely believe you guys operate in good faith and do, do the best for the county, but there's always, if there's economic incentive involved, it can drive business to be innovative and think differently. And when there's kind of the, well, we just do it, and then there's, there's a deficit, and then somebody writes the check for, for what's left, there's not a great incentive there, other than we're just good stewards of the money and we're acting in good faith. Like, you know, having some sort of economic pressure to the hospital to just drive, you know, that's what makes private business work so well. And I know you guys are a not-for-profit, and so it's not always that line of thinking, but when taxpayer money is involved, if there was a way to get to, you know, a little bit of skin in the game from the hospital, like, I would love to see that. And just looking at this, these numbers are great. Like, the one thing that stood out to me, though, is, you know, we have, you know, probably 40% less FTEs, and we have the same expenditures as Riley County, which is interesting to me, because I know, you know, wages and payroll are usually the top item on the expense category. And so if we take our FTEs out, and then we compare our expenditures between the three, I'd be curious, you know, what that looks like. But I'm just challenging you. I know that's just a little uncomfortable, but I, this is one of the, to me, it's a lot like other rate-funded programs, where ideally, it would be funded by the users. And I know we have an obligation to, under state statute, and just being good humans to help pay for people's medical services that won't and can't pay. But I would encourage you, I know Commissioner Hurst, you're, you've kind of taken the lead on, you're the point man for the commission on, on these interactions, so I don't have all the details on that. But I just encourage you to think about it, and even if there's just something, like, you know, I know you guys want more, better equipment, and, you know, if we could give you some of that in return for getting a little more skin in the game somewhere in this process, that would, that would be exciting to me. Again, that's just the business side, the economic side. I don't want that to weigh negatively on all of the good work you do for the community. So thank you again for all that.
If I could comment just a little bit about one of those things that you mentioned that we met with, and you haven't talked about it yet now, but that's the fact of our shortage in qualified, certified EMS, EMTs versus, why don't you talk just a little bit about that? And, because you could do it a lot more easier than I can.
Certainly, some of our, obviously, a large portion is dealing with FTEs. So there's a significant paramedic shortage in the nation, and specifically in Kansas. So this has really driven up salaries in competition for those paramedics. Obviously, during COVID, the class sizes were down, and there's a lot of folks that exited the profession. So we are taking steps to try and minimize that, but we've, we've had to adjust salaries, and we'll have to continue to adjust those to be competitive with the private entities, AMR, just even Rice County, Cedric County, and to stay competitive in that market. We're taking steps to try and add other types of users called advanced EMTs. We've partnered with Hudson's Community College, put together a very quick course that started here about three weeks ago, run through August to help augment that. So we're doing that. I will also, also comment that during our meetings, we have had discussion essentially about skin in the game, and our current agreement goes back many, many years, and there's been discussions about moving from a deficit-funded to simply a fat, flat fee, where this is the fee for the service, and if there is fee, money's left over, that's back to our organization. And if there's not, if we're short, then it's skin in the game for the hospital. So we've had those discussions in the past, and if that's something we need to move forward with, I'm certainly happy to do it.
Yeah, that'd be an interesting conversation. Appreciate you considering that. Commissioner Hurst, you got any final comments?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's like Horizons.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mike Garrett. I'm the CEO of Horizons Mental Health Center. I provided you with the packet for the budget request, so I won't go over all of those. I will hit some of the highlights. The first attachment that I gave is the number of uninsured individuals that Horizons sees from Reno County. I provided historical documentation back to 2013 as to that percentage, and it had historically been in the low 30% of people that have no insurance, that are completely uninsured. And then in the last two years, in calendar year 2020, that jumped up to 46% of the people seen in Reno County have no insurance at all. And then 2021 dropped to 43%. So 43%, so four out of every 10 people that come into the center have no insurance coverage. We put those individuals on a sliding fee scale that's based upon a matrix that determines family income or household income and the number of dependents that live on that income. And then they're given a fee, and we use county money, estate money, to underwrite the cost of that. For those self-pay individuals, I would speculate that the average fee is about $4 to $5 an hour for our services. That's whether they're seeing a master's level clinician or a physician, that's what they pay. So you can see that that number has continued to go up. The second document is the funding analysis from Reno County. I give you 14 years of information there. The top part is the amount of money received from Reno County over time. In 2008, it was $410. In 2021, that was $410,000, and then in 2021, it was $452,000 and $25 for that. So in, from '20 to '21, I asked for a 5% increase from the county. You granted that, that request, and that resulted in that increase. So from 2008 to 2021, there's about a 9% increase in funds that Horizons receives from Reno County. The third document is our financials from February. At the time of the funding request that was needed, this was the current funding, and we were showing a little bit under 1%. It was 0.89% negative margin. Since that time, we have completed our March financials, and we had a little bit better month there. And so the current year-to-date financials is $40,840 in the red. So that's through our first nine months in this fiscal year, so we have, we're 75% the way through it. I'm projecting that that will continue, that we'll probably have, I'm hoping, a 1% to 1.25% negative margin for the, for the year. I think that speaks to how critical the funding it is from the state, as well as our counties, to underwrite that cost of care that we provide to those people. And I guess I would say that part of our, our function is, we serve as a safety net clinic. By licensing standard, we serve everybody regardless of their ability to pay. We don't turn people away because they have no money. There's for-profit companies, there's private practitioners in town that won't see a homeless individual because they have no resources to pay for that. We're more than happy to see those individuals and provide that care that they need. The last document is the number of service hours provided within Reno County, and it has dropped over the last couple of years. And that's primarily due to two events. One is the pandemic. Our number of contacts with individuals really didn't go down. What happened is that people, it was harder to engage people over Zoom meetings, is what happened. Instead of having a 30-minute appointment, they might be done in 15 minutes, and they say, I don't, I don't want to talk anymore. We had that a lot with children, especially when they were quarantined, they weren't in school, and they spent all day on a computer, and then we were asking them to do that more after school or in the evenings. As I mentioned, March was a better month for us, so I'm hoping that that will rebound. But getting consumers re-engaged in care has been very difficult for us, and we're hoping that that will improve. The other factor is workforce issues, and I think everybody that comes and talks to you, I think the county probably experiences that themselves. We experience those workforce issues, primarily in our clinical services, our outpatient therapy services, those services provided by at least a master's level clinician licensed by the Behavioral Sciences Regulatory Board. As, as Dave mentioned, we had a lot of people just exit the, the industry during the pandemic and went to other options, and that was primarily telehealth, that they could work remotely from home and work three hours a day, four hours a day, five hours a day, whatever it might be, rather than coming into an office setting. I myself get flyers every day in the mail wanting me to participate in that program and sign up. So I think that's been a problem. Unfortunately, we've been part of that problem, because right now, Horizons employs 3.0 FTEs through a telehealth company because we can't get people to come into the office and employ them. So we're almost, if that makes sense, we're almost heading to the problem that I'm complaining about by hiring these individuals, which makes that telehealth company have higher demand to hire other people. But we really don't see an option now. We are trying to be as creative as we can, offering all types of contracts and incentives to bring those master's level clinicians back to work for us. With all that being said, my request from Reno County has just been to maintain our funding from calendar year 2022, so I'm not asking an increase for this upcoming calendar year.
Yeah, Mike, I got a couple of questions. I thought you received a small increase in 2022 from 452025. Am I incorrect? Did he not get an increase in 2022? Your, your chart here doesn't show the 2022.
I had to check that, Commissioner.
Okay. But, so you're really asking for the same money that you got in 2021, per your chart?
Yeah, and I'm wondering if my chart's messed up.
Is your chart the wrong year?
I'm, I'm thinking that.
Okay.
That, that's really what we received in 2022.
Okay.
But I'll check that and make sure the Commissioner knows that he got that information.
Well, you've always given us good information, and I'm not questioning your information other than I did see in your letter, you're asking for 452, and you're showing on your chart, 452 for 2021.
Right.
Okay. Secondly, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you announced your retirement?
I did.
And when, I've always been impressed when you come before the commission in my short time here. When is your retirement, and what is Horizons doing to find your replacement?
My time is July 1, and that's a little, that's, that's flexible to a certain extent. Our board has developed a search committee that has already opened up the position. They've received a couple of applicants for that position. The goal is to interview all applicants by the end of May and select someone by the beginning of June. Depending upon when they can start, if they're currently employed somewhere else, I could stay a few weeks.
Your hope is to have a transition where you might be there?
Correct. So I would think that there, there should be somebody at the very, very latest, the beginning of August.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hurst?
Thank you for your fine reports always, and for your work.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. You, I don't, can't, they said it already. Good job, good report. It's certainly an area of, of the community, I think, that we've identified as something that can help kind of break the cycle of, of, you know, other challenges in the community related to crime and so forth. And so appreciate your work on that. I know it's complex and ever-changing, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Reno County Museum.
Thank you so much for allowing us to come in and talk to you. My name is Mike Labels. I'm the Executive Director for the Reno County Historical Society. I'm actually over both the Reno County Museum and Stratica, but today, obviously, we're talking about Reno County Museum. I did bring along my Operations Manager, Katie Broker.
Good morning.
But before we get into all the budgetary information, it's important for us to explain a little bit more about Reno County Museum and its history. The Reno County Museum itself has been a part of the Historical Society, and it was established in 1961. Since that point, it's been a crucial part in the preservation of our community, and obviously, for decades. Now, it's interesting that the work that we're doing right now, this is kind of the main core group, this is actually from our 2020 museum fest, and it was actually pretty impressive, but this is actually the core group of individuals. And it's interesting that we actually have to kind of identify that all of the work that's being completed is actually done by a core, small group of individuals. Obviously, you know, I'm the Executive Director. I work, you know, directly with our Operations Manager, Katie. Obviously, Katie has to deal with me on a day-to-day basis, and that by itself is a full-time job. So I do apologize, Katie. But, but Katie here, she deals with everything from dealing with our volunteers, not dealing with, but managing our volunteers, managing the day-to-day processes, gift shop, our events, our, our programs. And again, it's been an amazing opportunity to work with Katie. Katie came on in 2015, and has been transitioned into this position in 2019. Now, we do have a Maintenance Supervisor, Jonathan Zimmer. He maintains all of the necessary components of our museum, our free museum, I'll say it that way. Anything that's out of his, you know, out of his hands, we always get a contractor come in. We do have a curator, which is David Reed, which is on the far right there. He's been with us since 2019, has very ambitious goals, along with the idea that David is excited about, ecstatic about trying to transform the organization so that way we can share more about his past. In fact, David just recently received a grant from the BNSF Railroad to, to try to help transform our playroom upstairs. And again, that combines with a caboose, a car, and an engine. Obviously, we want to share a little bit more about that history so kids can understand that the railroad is a pillar of our community. Our Lead Archivist, Thomas, he's actually near Katie, he's between Katie and I on that photo there. He's not with us currently. He actually has, he's out on leave. He received a, or he, received, he had a baby just recently, and so he's actually on leave right now. But he started out with the organization in 2017, and was then moved into a paid position as Assistant Curator, and then in 2019, he moved into the Lead Archivist. Thomas actually has a degree in archival work, and so it's only suited, suited that he has actually the Lead Archivist. But again, we, we kind of want to reiterate the fact that all of the work that's being completed here is done by this core group of individual, individuals, as well as the fact that three of those individuals that I just made mention to are actually shared, paid partially by the sister organization, Stratica. So there's only two, two staff members that are solely being paid by the Reno County Museum. Now, again, obviously, we couldn't do all the work that we do without our volunteers, so I'm actually going to pass this over to Katie, so that Katie can talk to you. so I'm actually going to pass this over to Katie so that Katie can talk a little bit more about her volunteers.
So we're fortunate at RSCM to have a few regular volunteers from our community. We have three regular volunteers right now that come in and help us with our reception. They also help in the archival area cataloging and housing artifacts. So they're integral to our operation, we couldn't operate the way we do without them. On top of that, we have a pool of individuals that come in specifically to help us with community events that we put on, and these events are educational events for children or fundraising events for us, or other opportunities for people to interact with their county history. So we're glad to have that pool that we pull from. We can have anywhere between five to 20 volunteers for an event, and we have that group that we rely on in our community. With that being said, I want to highlight some of our programs and events, just so you know what we've been up to for the past few years. 2021, like 2020, gave us its share of struggles with engaging our community and affected both museum attendance and our events pretty heavily. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have any events for most of the year, not until the last quarter, and at least in the last quarter, we were able to host some pretty spectacular events, inviting the community back in person for the first time. I just want to highlight one of those events. I've detailed all of these events in our written proposal, but our 2021 Museum Spook Fest outperforms the 2019 numbers, more than double. We had over 800 people in attendance and we raised over $1,000 for the museum, so that gives just a good outlook for us of how much the community is supporting what we're doing. In 2022, we have a much bigger calendar of events. We actually have a full calendar of events for the first time in the last couple of years. We just held our first annual Antique Appraisal Fair, which was the first fundraiser we've had for the museum in several years. It was very successful, it's something we're looking forward to doing again, but what I wanted to highlight in this section is an ongoing program we have at the Reno County Museum called Historic Voices. It's a new program we've created with a grant from the Hutchinson Community Foundation. The purpose is to record firsthand accounts from individuals and organizations within Reno County in a documentary format that is then later accessible to the community. Not only does this make our stories accessible, it gives an opportunity to preserve those stories as told by your parents, your grandparents, all of your relatives, and that's something many people regret, not recording as time goes on. I cannot tell you how many times I've heard somebody say, I wish I would have sat down with Grandma, Grandpa and actually listened to what they were saying and wrote it down, because when they're gone, I don't have that anymore. This is our way of doing that for our community and for all Reno County residents completely for free. On the next slide, I want to really briefly go over our attendance for the last three years. Museum attendance was showing a really strong growth prior to the pandemic. In 2019, our estimated attendance was close to 10,000 visitors a year, and as you can see on the chart, it took a very significant hit in 2020. But it began recovering in 2021. Now, that hit was in-person attendance, that doesn't include other things that we've been doing. In 2020, we adapted and we shift focus from in-person engagement to more virtual engagement. We invested in our social media accounts and our website, and this proved to be very successful in getting our community history and this historical data that we house for the community out to a further audience. So we've kept that, and we continue to work on that with our in-person engagement. Currently, our social media engagement is on par with larger museums such as Stratica and the Cosmosphere, while we exceed the engagement of museums of a similar size to ours such as Harvey County and McPherson County. We're doing this all with a very small staff that has no marketing budget and no marketing team. This is sheerly the passion for sharing history with our county that our staff has. Support for Reno County Museum is growing, we're showing resilience and strength as it grows despite the challenges and the uncertainty that we've faced in the past couple of years. Data shows an increase in support for local history as the museum continues to be a resource, a recreational space, and a historical database for more and more community members every day. And I'll give it back over to Michael so he can talk more about that support.
Well, again, the museum support here, this is pretty impressive, considering that the fact is, is that when we started to look at the data in 2019, it was just a little over $11,000. This is from local communities, our local support, you know, in the categories of events, memberships, rentals, gift shop, and I believe that we all, we had that labeled down there in our proposal, but what we saw was a significant growth over the last several years in 2021. It actually exceeded $40,000 in support, and that includes also the grants that we received, which is pretty impressive considering that all of this is done, again, with the small staff that we do have. Each of these three years, and it's important to notate, is that each of these three years, its amount is only in addition to the funds we've received from the Reno County allocations. So the interest here is that it's an investment. What we're seeing is that there's a larger investment in our history, from our community, and it is allowing us to continue to rapidly grow, improve our exhibits, enhance our programs, and again, become exceedingly more accessible to our public, and that's the goal of the Reno County Museum. Now, there is challenges along the way, and this just happens to be one of the biggest challenges that we're facing with. And this is not just this museum, this is all museums, in fact, all of, all museums that are free particularly. And so the Reno County Museum is seeing that this, that there's a rise in inflation rates. This graph shows that the Consumer Price Index since January 2017, and you can see that just in 2022, it has spiked heavily. That puts us at risk. The reason why that we're saying that is that it's a, it puts all of the things that we're doing at risk due to the fact that people are not being able to donate as much. The programs that we're doing cost us twice as much. The things that we're wanting to accomplish cost twice as much, and ultimately, even the cost of living for the staff members that we currently have, it really puts us in a damper, and so what we're seeing as a free museum, the goal is, is that we're trying to continue to be accessible to all the residents, but we need additional assistance. We need additional help in that process, and as stewards of our county history, it is our duty to continue to keep that historical data accessible, but again, we're at risk with that inflation rate. Now, finally, we just wanted to kind of showcase that the Reno County Museum's allocation over the last three years has stayed fairly stagnant, has stayed fairly steady at the 185 mark, but what we're asking for is a increase to 7% increase in our allocation from 185, $185,000 to $197,950. This is to cover our increase of operations, our programs, help us with our events as well as exhibits, and to also help our staff members in their wages. Now more than ever, it's more important to share, preserve our past so that way we are better prepared for our future. Again, I appreciate your time, and again, thank you so much, and if you have any questions, we'll be more than willing to answer them.
I guess I'm not on Facebook that much and so forth, but I read in the paper the other day that you had had a very successful asking of World War II communications. I thought that was very interesting. I guess a lot of us don't follow necessarily Facebook continually, or the 15 or 20 or 25 different Facebook thing, is the, how do you get the information out there to people? How do you get the information out to become friends of the museum? How do you do that? And so that you can get a little more interest.
I know that Katie, Katie's done a significant job at doing outreach. She's actually on radio multiple times. We've actually started to work, especially with this last program that we did, the Antiques Appraisal, we actually ran several radio ads, and we worked with Eagle Radio to get those ads, so that way we're able to push more information out to people. When they come in, when they come through the doors, they're able to see kind of what we're going on, the various programs that we have, and we're very eager, in fact, Katie's done a significant job at trying to get the volunteers, and in fact, what's really pretty impressive is that it's the continuous volunteers that come through the doors. That's what we love seeing, is the continuation of people rolling through our doors, and again, I think that one of the things that is missing here is that this year, we're on par to get back to that 2019 pre-pandemic moment, so we're seeing those numbers improve. But again, the one, the problem here is that we're running into the number problem of people give, but it's going to cost us a lot more to continue to do what we're doing.
And if you don't mind, I have a comment for that, that same question Mr. Sellers had. With people who are not on social media on the website, that's where a lot of our community collaborations come into play, where we're starting to work with Hutch Rec, we're starting to work with smaller organizations and groups such as the Sons of the American Revolution, the Daughters of the American Revolution, to bring those entities in and create more supporters for history, and that seems to be working fairly well too. We have multiple aspects that we work on with our outreach beyond just social media and the internet.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jackson Swer, I'm with Startup Hutch, and I will try to be quick for you, although I have several slides to share about what we've been doing, and I'll click fast as fast as I can for you. So also in the audience with us today is Dave Ducar, our Program Administrator, and myself, we formed the team here at Startup Hutch. You asked for me to highlight any upcoming changes for future years, so I do want to take just a moment, although I will probably see you between now and then, to share with you that Dave is planning to retire at the end of the year, and we're working on finding not his replacement, but the person who's going to take that role, the Program Administrator, after Dave. We'll reshuffle some operational things and some responsibilities, so I'll take on some things that Dave's been doing, but really excited about that, and we're going to have a great team going forward. So you'll see some things, particularly if you're looking at this year's proposed budget, that will be important for that. Okay. So entrepreneurship, I always like to start with this, I know all of you understand this, but just for anyone who's listening in the audience, you know, we want to try to support small businesses and help people start and grow their businesses here in Reno County. I think that's really important for a couple of reasons. One is because it helps us to root wealth locally, so when people start their businesses here and they grow their businesses here, then the money that they make there stays here, and it helps to grow our local economy and gets contributed back into our community in other ways. It also creates jobs, so we did a fun thing this year called the Double Dare Challenge, where we tried to find all of the people who'd doubled their number of employees, whether from one to two or 50 to 100 in the last few years, and we found that just among people who doubled in size, we could identify 180 jobs that had been created by local small businesses over that period of time. So I think that our small businesses are big drivers of our local jobs. Of course, that isn't to say that that's the only thing that we need to do in economic development. I always like to add that recruiting and retaining larger employers is really important as well, but that's why we want to support entrepreneurship. I think it helps us to create a vibrant and resilient community and local economy. I also want to remind you that Startup Hutch is part of the Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership. This is a group of partners across really the region, but specifically in Reno County that's been working to promote entrepreneurship and to improve not only what Startup Hutch does, but what everybody is doing to help entrepreneurs in Reno County. That group is currently in the process of updating its action plan and also starting to look again at what the long-term sustainability of funding is for some of the programs and some of the activities that we've been doing. So be looking forward to more communication from that group as well. With any further ado, I want to share with you some of our accomplishments from the last year. Before I do that, I just want to share a small challenge that we have with some of our data. I have the dashboard that I'll share with you that you've seen before. I think we may look to change this in the future. We've just acquired last year, in the middle of the year, a new system for tracking our clients that we're still trying to get a handle on how to use that to its fullest extent. So some of our data was a little bit limited by that, we had some small snags, and we were, but we were able to gather information from all of our borrowers, which is the key group of people that we've loaned money to. So some of this is a little bit undercounted, I think. So we recorded five new business startups and $475,000 loaned out last year, that was way above our goal. I'll note that a significant portion of that went to one larger project, the Hope Hotel LLC project, but we did make five total loans last year, so we were spread it around and also had a really impactful large project. We were able to record that 46 jobs were created out as a result of that activity, a little shy of our goal of 50, but we did engage with many more businesses than our goal, and we counted a total of 69 entrepreneurs engaged with, and that data actually is only from the last half of last year, because that's when we instituted the new client management system. We also have a plan to try to recruit people to come to events, and last year, we had a lot of online events, sort of particularly through the first part of the year when we were still dealing with some of the ongoing pandemic issues. We did record 273 different attendees to our various online events, a lot of that and our in-person events combined, and a lot of those were folks who were able to take in some of our digital content after the fact, like our hot seats. We did miss our goal on engaging with middle school and high school students through entrepreneurial activities through the YEC Challenge. We had a couple of instructors at local high schools who had some significant health issues, and their students were not able to participate this year. One, one school only had one team and the other did not have any, so I expect to see that bumping back up again this year. So I want to highlight a few of the different loans that we did, this isn't all of them, but I wanted to point these out to share particularly that there are different kinds of loans that we can do and different sorts of businesses that we work with. So Hutchinson Mental Health is a loan, we were able to loan out of a different fund through Network Kansas called the Kansas Community Investment Fund that can go towards health and community development-oriented businesses, and that filled a critical need for more mental health services. We also helped Andrew Penrose to purchase what is now called Jack's For All Trades, which used to be called Stucky Wood Products over there in Beulah. That was an important business transition project that helped him keep that business going. And then, of course, we had the Hope Hotel LLC, which was sort of, I think, going to be a pretty important catalytic project for the downtown, to create a hotel across the street from the Fox Theater. We, you'll see many people in that photo, we worked with multiple partners, the bank, People's Bank and Trust, the Community Foundation, Network Kansas, to layer together a capital stack to get them the funding that they needed, and also the city of Hutchinson. They acquired some CDBG funds from the state from that as well. So lots of different funding sources that we were able to layer together to make that project get started. We had a series of events and meetups, I won't spend too much time here, except to point out that we've done some virtual things, and we've also done some in-person things. We're trying to get back on our feet with some more in-person meetup opportunities this year. Had a few snags, I'm trying to get a few of those things set up, but really exciting, really excited about what's going to be coming up later this year from Startup Hutch. And we've been able to grow our online community as well, so just a couple of facts and figures to share with you on that. We have, we've gotten up to 990 followers on Facebook. I wish that 10 more people would have followed us before the meeting so that I could have sent 1,000, would have been a nice round number for me, but we're doing really well getting the word out. I'm sure there are some more people who need to find us, but I think we've found a lot of the people who are interested in small business and entrepreneurship, and we're sharing the good work with them about what we do. We also have a private Facebook group called the Startup Hutch Idea Exchange, which has 248, almost 250 members in it as well, where folks can come in and ask specific questions. I'd love to see a little more activity in that as well, so if any of you have any questions about entrepreneurship or how to start a business, you can throw them in that private group. And we have had some great feedback and discussions in there when people do post questions. Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, we did in 2021, we'll do it again this year. The winners this past year were the representatives from the Sweet Treat from Hutchinson High School. They are going to be participating in the statewide YEC later this week.
Thursday.
Thursday. So we'll wish them all good luck. We also hosted a business transition panel last year, and we're going to continue to try to do more to promote business transitions and try to work with not only potential buyers for new businesses, but also the people who own businesses and need to prepare them to sell. We're collaborating with the Chamber on that. We feel that they are the right people to get in front of people who currently own businesses, and a big part of what we're going to try to do this year with a series of workshops that we've got on the calendar for August, is work with folks to try to help them set their business up for success so that they could sell it at any time in the the future, as they're operating it right now. We know a lot of people don't like to talk about potentially selling their business. They think that that creates a bad image for themselves. Sometimes it might scare away their employees, but we want people to start thinking about that earlier. And often, we don't want folks coming to us saying, hey, I really want to sell my business right now. It's better to plan those things in advance. We're trying to work with people to help them create plans. And we provided some workshops last year, and we're doing more of this this year as well. How to Think Like an Entrepreneur was one that we did last year. Also, sometimes goes by Who Owns the Ice House. It's based on a book. That's a Network Kansas Board-approved program. We've got some more exciting things like that coming up. Speaking of, oh, I'm sorry, Double Dare Challenge. There was one more. This is something else we did last year. Mentioned this briefly earlier, just fly right by here. We recognized 15 Reno County businesses who doubled in size since 2019, but we did take that 2020 year out of there. So we didn't want people dipping down and then going back up again. So we went back to 2019. Really great job growth that's been created by some local businesses there that we were able to recognize at the Chamber Awards Night earlier this year. What do we have upcoming? I'm sorry, I'm just flying through as quick as I can, guys. We're doing Entrepreneurship Business Basics right now. This is a class that is being also offered in partnership with Network Kansas. We've recruited Dave Satello to be the facilitator for this. It's specifically targeting kind of unlikely or perhaps unexpected or maybe underrepresented entrepreneurs, and we're trying to work with folks who don't always get all the opportunities and all the knowledge that they need to start a business, to help them get the tools that they need to be successful. And there's also a small pitch competition, a small $1,000 grant that folks who participate in this can get at the end to help them get a little bit further in getting going. We are also going to be doing, I mentioned the workshops in August, and we're working on setting up some marketing and digital skills meetups. So that's going to be some of our in-person events that we're going to do later this year. We're working with some partners to get that off the ground, and I would love to see those be going right now, but we're having a little bit of a hard time getting those going, because it's a completely new program. We're trying to build it ourselves. But I'm pretty confident that once we get it going, they'll be great. And we do know that people love to get together and they like to meet up, but they also want there to be something specific that they know they're going to learn about. So this is kind of our solution to that. And we've also identified that help with marketing is one of the biggest needs that local entrepreneurs have to some of the survey work that the Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership has done. So I always like to remind everyone and the whole community and you all that this is an experiment. We're trying different experiments. We like to try different things. Entrepreneurship itself is about experimenting, and I think that any kind of community leadership is also about trying different things and experimenting as well. So, you know, we're just going to keep, we're going to keep doing that. We've tried some great things, some things have worked. We're going to leave the things behind that don't work and try new things again. All right, now to the money part. This is roughly the plan and the outline for the funding partnership for the five-year period of the community foundation's five-year grant to Startup Hutch that funded the Entrepreneur Navigator position and a lot of our new programming and marketing. You'll note here that the plan was to, so Reno County saw a big bump up in 2020. We planned a decrease into that and then a ramp back up again as we look towards long-term sustainability with funding from our partners. The goal at the end, going into 2025, just not to think too, too far ahead here, but is that we need to create a plan where we've got sustainable and hopefully stable amount of funding from the public partners, and Startup Hutch is positioned to attract other private capital, whether that's grants from the community foundation or other regional partners to sustain the rest of our operational budget. We are doing some work already to make plans for that through the Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership, and also we're looking at a couple of different grant opportunities through some regional partners that will help us to get funding in the long term. And this is a little bit of a new format for this that Randy asked me to provide. This shows some of the past year's actuals and budgeted numbers. Just a couple of things to call your attention to here. You'll note that we, oh, I'm going to go back really fast to one thing. So you'll note that in 2021 and 2022, there's a small asterisk next to the city of Hutchinson number. So we had planned to ramp them up a little faster and get them on equal funding with you all in 2022. So that didn't happen understandably, particularly in the last couple of years with COVID. We had no way to know that everyone was going to see record sales tax revenues. So we planned for those decreases there. So looking here in 2020, you can see that we did have some retained, retained earnings there. That was primarily from hiring the Entrepreneur Navigator about a quarter of the way through the year and some other things that we did to try to cut costs in 2020, when there was a lot of uncertainty about the future. We didn't receive all the allocation that we expected in 2021, but our planning ahead worked well. We were right up route break even in 2021. And we've actually budgeted a pretty sizable overspend on our expenditures for this year. And I wanted to explain that as, that is the result of us trying to hire somebody for a significant overlap with Dave. He's been basically, well, he was running the organization before I got here, and we need to make sure that there's somebody has a long period of time to make sure that they know how to do all of the core operational activities, dealing with our loan funds, particularly and some compliance with that. In 2023, you'll see that we're planning for personnel expenses to come back down, but to continue to have some significant marketing expenses. And hopefully, we'll be able to do more with our programming budget and do some more exciting things if we're able to get full funding from all of our public funding partners. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Sellers?
What goes into marketing communications? You're wanting $40,000 for next year, isn't it?
So a significant part of that is our contract with our local marketing firm who helps us to get the word out about what we do. They help manage our Facebook page, our social media, our newsletter.
Thank you.
Designed, that kind of thing.
Mr. Hurst?
Yeah, we've talked about this before. What are you doing to, county pays a significant share of this the last two or three years. What are your efforts, and I've got some questions with regard to this. What are your efforts to engage the whole county?
So.
Communities. Have you been out to some of these communities? And have you presented to, say, the Community Association of Pretty Prairie, the chambers at Haven, at Bueller, and Nickerson, and South Hutch's community? What are you, have you been out?
So we, I know, I know I need to go on, on a longer tour with Commissioner Hurst is one of the answers. We have, we are a member of the Haven Chamber as well, and so we head over to their annual meetings. And I've been talking to them some about some of their efforts to get some housing going there and some of the great businesses that they're supporting there in Haven. And also, I've chatted with the Bueller Economic Development folks as well. But you mentioned that the Pretty Prairie folks. I know I haven't been down to see them, and it has been quite some time since I've been over to see my friends in Arlington as well. So I know that there are definitely some more outreach we could do in the county. You raise a great point, though, and it's an important one for me. I should have said this all the way up front, that the name is Startup Hutch, but of course, we serve the whole county, and that's an important aspect of our organization.
And that's primarily, because if they don't know, you know, you haven't seen any marketing and any of the little weekly newspapers, so I'm wondering if that $40,000 or whoever you're paying is, is really concerned about outreach besides social media. So that was...
We are.
I'm just.
I understand, Ron.
Okay. And I think you've done a great job, and I sure have. And just the fact that there's virtually, what, half a million dollars that Startup Hutch has, that I don't think there's any, very many counties around that can even touch that. And that's just because you, Dave, and the board have seen fit to reach out to opportunities to allow us to have those revolving loan funds in cooperation with the community foundation.
Absolutely. Thanks for mentioning that, Ron. I think that the partnerships with the Hutchinson Community Foundation and also with Network Kansas, one of the statewide organizations that supports entrepreneurs, has really helped us have, there's money to be deployed to small businesses here, and we want to help get people connected to those funds so that they can get things started.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst. Jackson, thank you. You know, I tend to believe in this a lot. I feel like entrepreneurship and entrepreneurism is the foundation of a growing economy. I appreciate the fact that you pointed out this is an experiment. It's going to take time to fully develop together, and certainly, you know, you've got a nice platform, and I think the performance report that you provided is one of the better ones we see from these organizations with, you've set yourself some primary and secondary goals, and you're reporting on it and being honest where you've not met it and highlighting where you have. And so I think that's a good example for other agencies that are, that are using county funds to really provide a concise view of what you're, your, how you've achieved your goals. So appreciate that. I just wanted to continue to encourage Startup Hutch to look for opportunities with existing businesses that may need something. Specifically, you know, we all, all of our businesses outsource, and we bring, you know, we, we outsource stuff to other counties and other states, and we import things from other counties and other states. And finding those things and finding an opportunity perhaps with, with certain businesses that have challenging supply chain or whatever, and trying to bring that supply chain in the community, I think, is something that Startup Hutch could really do well for our community is just capture even a few of those a year, you know, basically say, hey, we have a new business opportunity here where we can fill a need with an existing business. And so I would continue to encourage, that was when we had the, the kind of annual retreat. That was the thing that I felt was, was really important for the community. And then I would encourage you to, I know you talk to the Chamber all the time, but the Chamber, we have tasked the Chamber with working on a better and more robust economic development policy. And I think there's a component of entrepreneurship that needs to be bolted onto that when it comes back. So I would encourage you to be involved in, in that development. I know we just got some reports back from the Chamber on that work, so check in with them, please.
Thank you. I'd be, I'd love to, love to loop in on that. And Randy, if you and me and Deborah can circle up on that, I think that'd be great. I appreciate that you, you acknowledged that we talk a lot with the Chamber as well. You know, in my attempts to fly by things, I didn't put too fine a point on that, but I think that the ability of our economic development partners here in Reno County to talk to each other and collaborate is really important and is not what it is like everywhere else.
Well, I know we, during the process of redeveloping Startup Hutch, we, that was a concern initially, and I think, I think everything points to the agencies working together nicely. So thank you for that. And then congratulations to David on your retirement, and thank you for all your work you've done for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Brenda Maxi with Tech Incorporated. Tech is preparing to celebrate 50 years of providing services to people in Reno County with developmental disabilities. And I'm proud to say that I have been a part of those 50 years for 34, and I have been honored to be able to serve as the CEO for the last 24 of those years. I will be retiring, so I would like to be able to introduce you all to my successor, who has been hired by our Board of Directors, Kevin Hess, who has been serving as our Vice President and has been with us for the last three and a half years, will assume the CEO responsibilities on July 1. So with that, I will tell you that Reno County Commission has been a part of Tech's history for 49 of our 50 years, and we have greatly appreciated the support that you all have given us for those 49 years. We certainly would not be able to offer the types of services to the full array of people that we provide those services to without your continued support. You'll notice in our funding request that we are not asking for an increase this year, but to be held at the same allocation that we did for calendar year 2022. We have, for the last year, been getting ourselves back up from the pandemic situation. We are almost 100% operational again, although we do have a few folks who have yet to come back into our services, taking a much more cautious approach, either because of health-related concerns or just aren't quite ready to venture back out into a, a larger gathering. The pandemic did take us down for a number of months, and we approached that very cautiously, both with our staff and the people we provide services to. We continued to provide services all throughout the pandemic, although a number of those were virtual as opposed to in-person. We did the same thing with all of our fundraising events, going live last year for the first time with a handful of our events, all of which were successful for us. So as we're moving into this year, knocking on wood that so far, so good, we actually went unmasked for the first time three weeks ago in all of our facilities and are watching both the community radar as well as our internal for any need to have to remask in the event that we need to. We serve a lot of people that are medically fragile, with very vulnerable health conditions. So with that, both Kevin and I would be happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Brenda or Kevin, either one, I noticed in the resources you gave to us that under revenue sources, you're budgeting for 2023 the exact same numbers that you are for 2022. That surprises me that you can make that work.
I think Tech has, over the course of several years, worked to try to find ways to gain that same revenue source and fight to continue to receive that revenue source. So I think it's been imperative that we continue to push ourselves to continue to gain that, that strength in the Medicaid side as well as other areas of the organization. We've had a very good community base. It's been very supportive of us, and we've had some very good contracts with some contract work here in town that have been very supportive for the organization.
So to keep that same expenditure for next year, you're going to have me, what, more patient or more effective? Sounds like to me she's leaving you in a bind.
No, she's not. No, she's not.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Hurst?
Thanks for your service and what you do, who you do it for.
What did you two do to the county manager to make him put you on the last on the list this morning?
We were last last year, too.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Thank you.
Brenda and Kevin, thank you for the presentation. Brenda, thank you for your dedication to the community. Congratulations on your retirement. Kevin, you got big shoes to fill. Congratulations on your, your promotion. And certainly agree, Tech has a great reputation and great part of our foundation as a community in Reno County. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's going to do great.
Thank you.
Yeah. If we could, we're going to do a five-minute break. Get back here around five till or so, a little after.
Yearly update.
Laurie Moody, Communication Specialist for Reno County. I will go quickly. So our main objectives for our communications yearly plan are going to stay the same for this year. Last year in 2021, our main objectives were to improve perception of Reno County, to increase knowledge of Reno County departments and services, and to increase our audience and reach. And so we had a variety of different initiatives that we were utilizing to reach those objectives. And so we had a variety of different initiatives that we were utilizing to reach those objectives. Of course, in 2021, there was an emphasis on Health Department communications, especially with vaccine rollout and education campaigns. In the following pages, you'll see a whole lot of data from social media, but for Commissioner Hurst's benefit as well. We did a lot of different initiatives, usually with a lot of different mediums. So for the vaccine rollout, we did digital billboards in both English and Spanish. We had flyers both in English and Spanish. We did newspaper ads in both the Hutchinson News and Rural Messenger. We did, of course, social media. We did a lot of radio on both Ad Astra and Eagle stations. And then we also, the city of Hudge has been very generous with any videos that we have completed, they play on their Cable Channel 7 for us. We also went through a website redesign, which was completed in October, and of course, that's ongoing to try to look at ways to improve it. And then we've been doing our departmental and service spotlights. Those are some of the ones that we did through the year. There are also videos that we did that the public doesn't get to see, so just some Health Department training videos and things like that that I have been doing. So for the next few pages, I gave you some social media data as well. That's just an easy way to kind of gauge some of the analytics and metrics. We have grown in all of our social media. I added LinkedIn. I also, as you'll see in the next page, we have an Instagram account, and I forgot to put Nextdoor as well. So we're kind of increasing our methods of communication with the community. I've set some more targets since we surpassed most of our goals except for LinkedIn, which has been a little bit of struggle. So I'm really trying to get some of our county employees to also get on there to network and to kind of share some of our job openings, but that's one of the primary goals. Some of our recruitment efforts through LinkedIn, we need to ramp up. We've been posting lots of videos on YouTube, which has been successful as well. So it's just some of the data of how our, the channels have increased. Looking ahead a little bit to 2022, we're working on some branding. And we have a new mission, vision, vision and values that we're going to be getting out to the community as well as communicating with our internal audience, our employees, doing some fun kind of events as well to kind of roll that out. We're looking at kind of improving our logo usage with some updates and standardization for all departments, because we've kind of been all over the place with communication in the past using our logo. One of the big initiatives again is the Commissioner expansion. So we now have three Commissioners that we need to vote in, so we've been trying to get the word out about that. And I do have a flyer and I, we will be having a booth at Third Thursday. I did this last Third Thursday as well and talked to a few individuals, but we really do need some community members to apply and run for those positions if anyone's listening. And also some of our other elections, Jenna's going to be teaming up with me. We're going to have some booths and doing some outreach things for elections as well. And then to continue with our department and program spotlights, again, some of the ARPA funding, communication, once we get that initialized, elections, and highlighting some different things. So that's really all I had, unless you guys have some questions or comments or things you want me to work on more.
Lori, how long have you been here?
A year and a half, sir.
Okay. I was wanting to say two.
Nope.
This is a new position for the county. You're the first person in this position, hopefully for a long time. Can you tell me, I advocated for this, and I think Commissioner Hurst supported this position as before Daniel was on the Commission. Give us just your short views on how your position has been, what you felt it would be, and what it might be different than what you thought it would be when you applied for this.
Well, I'm never bored. Working with 19 different departments has been very busy. I think I was hoping, and I hope to get more time to kind of do some more strategic planning and looking at the big picture right now, that's just a lot of little initiatives with social media. I get, you know, I'm working with every different program within the Health Department right now with their educational initiatives. It was pretty much what I expected. I didn't realize at the time how much COVID would obviously take of my time at the first year, but luckily that's hopefully.
You're doing a lot for the Health Department.
Yes.
And Randy's somewhat new, so maybe we don't have people in the, did they do their own marketing before you arrived, I assume? Somebody in their department?
I believe we utilized the agency for a lot of that right before I came and during the transition. But before COVID, they did. I know some of their staff were doing the press releases and the social media. And I'm also helping out with their Heal Facebook page through a grant through Pathways, so, which will take a little bit more time on my end as well.
Well, I, I felt a year and a half ago that this position was needed by the county, and I'm even more glad that we developed it when we did because of your work with the COVID event. Just get more done. Thank you.
Trying. And we are doing a lot more outreach now that we're able to go out into the public, so I like to keep looking for ways to get out there.
Are you doing any speaking to groups?
I have not yet, no.
Thought we ought to consider.
From my standpoint, it's been, the people out in the county, it's been good to just say, okay, you want to know about crop burning? Go to the website. And so that, to me, that, having that information on there is really good. I thank you for doing that. And the only thing I have to say is, extra is, next time somebody wants an interview and I'm in there, try to give me more than three minutes. I know you couldn't do that, but nonetheless.
We appreciate you all being open to doing that.
Lori, thank you. I've seen the value in your work for sure, and appreciate all the, I mean, I think you're kind of, you're one of the kind of pieces of glue that keep all the departments together, and so I appreciate that and appreciate you working amongst all the departments. I feel like there isn't a commission meeting that doesn't go by where I say, well, we should have Lori do something, like fill in the blanks.
I always have my notepad ready.
Thank you for that. I think it's, even though it wasn't a part of it, I, I agree with the premise that communicating with our, our bosses, the taxpayers and residents of Reno County is highly important. So thank you for your work in that area. Thanks for the report. Randy, you got a couple items on your report, CIP presentation, and then monthly reports.
So for the CIP presentation, so 2023 through 2027 CIP, there was a resolution passed a few years ago that requires a, and it's really more about the capital improvement program fund, but it's supposed to get in front of the Commission by, by June, I believe. And so I took this opportunity in my report to present, here's the CIP request that will be, it's for 23 through 27, but it's for all the departments. It'll be in their operating budgets. If you see anything in here that you have concerns, questions on, let me know before we get the budget documents completely prepared for budget work sessions that will take place in June or July. Very quick, there's, in the packet, there's a summary of all the requests, and then further in the packet, you'll see pages for each department, and then for 2023 requests, you'll see the details of that, that item on here. The items highlighted in yellow here are highlighted because we put them in the capital, but they're, they're in the budget, they're going to show up in contractual commodities, but because they're tied to capital projects like roads and bridge construction or brand-new vehicles for the Sheriff's Office that are in a different capital line item, we wanted to include them. So you do see that they're tied to other capital projects that take place each year. One of the big changes for 2023, let's see, go down to it, is we moved auto, to kind of put more emphasis for auto requests and then purchases during the year, since we have an auto department, to have Kyle really oversee more of the purchasing and then the requests when the departments to make requests to Kyle, to start with Kyle, and then it comes to me of what vehicles they feel they need to be replacing over the next few years. He can look at the county inventory of vehicles to see if there can be some shuffling of vehicles and which ones need to be traded in and which ones need to be replaced. So he can work with departments on that. And then it pulls the, what's approved, will pull the vehicles out of the departmental budgets, their capital budgets, and it'll be in the special equipment fund. So that's one of the big changes for 23 that we did. There's also special equipment and then use services. The total for capital improvement items, current year, they're $7.2 million budgeted. Next year, the request came in at $6.4 million. You can see future years, it goes down. Part of that is because it's hard to forecast exactly what we need. We can get some of the big items, but there are, vehicles are easy to determine that far out, but some of the building construction or building renovations, we may not have in here. This does have, one of the big items in here I'll bring up is the courthouse general, courthouse improvements. We've talked about the space study and, and when you guys have, you know, asked if there's money, if we needed to pay in the capital improvement reserve fund from, for the fire trucks, if it's not out of the ARPA funds. Part of that money comes from these line items, courthouse improvements. We do have the space study allocated, but when we, since we've been allocating it and budgeting for that for the past couple of years, when it's not been completed, that money goes from the general fund to the capital improvement reserve fund. So we do have a couple million dollars in reserves, partially for the space study, but also these other emergencies that take place. So I do have the request in 23, not knowing when we're going to get the space study done and what the cost will come in, another million dollars added for 23 for that line item. Any questions on, questions or concerns with the CIP?
Ms. Sellers?
Yeah, a couple. I think you've explained why 2024 through 2027 is lower than the last two years, and I think you explained that those necessarily aren't going to happen. So for your long-range budgeting, you're not using those numbers, you're assuming that you're going to be similar to where you've been the last couple of years.
Right. Those numbers will go up as we get closer to the actual year.
I, thanks for explaining what the yellow lines meant. I had no idea what that meant. I'm wondering if we need to, it's easy for us Commissioners to bring this up, it's probably harder for operations to consider this, but through the last few years, we've been thinking that Sheriff's vehicles ought to be lasting longer. And I'm wondering if that isn't something that we need to dwell on in regard to this capital budget. Cars are just made better than they used to be, and if we could extend that another half year or something, that'd make a considerable budget, considerable difference over five Maybe that's an easy one for me to pick on because some of these others, I have no idea what they are. But I don't have much of a problem with what you've presented, other than how it relates to the total budget that you'll be bringing to us in later months.
Okay. And I'll talk with the Sheriff about the, and Kyle about the vehicles, the Sheriff's Office vehicles.
Have Kyle in the room at the same time.
Commissioner Hurst?
I'm still in that old process of digesting it all, and I think the questions were brought up to me earlier, too, is, is I think they were answered here.
Okay. Thank you. Randy, I ask this question a lot, it's asked in 10 different ways, but this budget, like, I always pick on solid waste. They're, they're rate-based, rate-funded department, and they, they tend to have a lot of CapEx. So is it, is it fair when I say, well, this includes both rate-funded revenue and tax levy? Or is?
Yeah, and I have on the screen, the last page shows the total summary for all departments, and then the other one, the tax levy funds.
Okay. I saw this and I kind of.
It doesn't plot which ones they are, but it is.
That's helpful. So you anticipated that question already?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense. And I guess that, going a little further, you know, if we, you know, $3.7 million for 2023 is a, one of the bigger line items on our budget, right? So it would be potentially an opportunity to slim down if we wanted to. I think the problem there lies that, like, I, if, if we were going to slim something down, I'd prefer to slim it equally, and that doesn't actually work when you go up to the top, right? Because it's, like, if we, if we cut $250,000 from CapEx next year, that really doesn't affect solid waste, as an example, picking on them again. So, okay. Just, I guess I'm making an observation.
I can't help but grin because Carter files in the audience, and I was on that board for years, and I never did understand the budget. And, you know, I think administrators have fun making these things difficult.
Yes. Well, certainly the budget forms that the state provides don't allow the common person to comprehend what we're doing, and that's unfortunate. But it does make sense to me. I think what you're doing is, are you, are you, are you needing approval?
No, they don't formally be approved during the budget session, but I wanted, if there are any major concerns or you see something that you have, you're not going to vote for, if you let us know, and I'll address that with the Director, we'll pull it or address it during the budget work session.
But I think I'm in line with Commissioner Sellers in that, you know, there's probably something in here that I might propose to cut, but it depends on the overall budget before I would make that proposal.
This doesn't really have anything to do with the big ticket purchase on this part, but as we go forward in this next year, I just learned about how much more oil and asphalt and those are going to cost in this next year, and that's, it'll be tough.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Related to the budget, wanted to see when the Commission would be available to schedule a work session, the session where we have all the Directors of Departments, and then we invite the Hutchinson Fire Department and Emergency Communications to address and have a discussion with the Commission about their budget request. Usually it's the very end of June or early July. Are there dates or weeks that work better for, for you guys? Are there dates or weeks that work better for you guys?
I mean, you need two days.
I would say two days, just so we can spread it out and not be all day, both days.
Good. Make an observation, and this doesn't mean it's correct, but I think you're actually doing a better job communicating during the year, and I think, if I remember last year, we get kind of an overview from each department, which we're getting in the middle of the year now. So I would think we could focus a little more on the budget aspects and not get the, and I appreciate departments want to make their case and make a pitch, but I don't, like, I think they're doing that throughout the year, kind of telling us all the great things they're doing and why their department is important. I don't know that we need to rehash the general focus of the departments, and if there's a way to narrow that, I...
I think that's a good point. I think we're better informed due to the monthly reporting of the departments than we used to be, and you're doing more thorough budgeting as time goes on, so I don't think that there's quite the need for the extensive time in June.
It sounds like we'll give you two days if you need it. Maybe, maybe we could set a date to start, and then maybe you could go back and consider adjusting the format a little bit and seeing...
And I can do that, because really, like, right now, I'm looking at their budget requests, they've all been turned in, and so then I meet with directors and make adjustments, my recommendations or changes, and have questions for the directors at that point. And then when we get to, then the work sessions are really for you guys and the directors to have a communication if there are any concerns you have with their budget before a recommended budget is in front of you in July or August. So if you want those to be shorter, or you guys get the workbook, and I can kind of go over each department, and we can have directors available at different times, it'd be a lot quicker without them giving true presentations, kind of like what the outside agencies have been doing, pull that part out and really just questions. If you know the questions beforehand, I can bring in directors that you want to talk to. If there are budgets that are very simple, there's no increase, there are really nothing different, then we don't need to schedule those, if that's what you're thinking of.
In the allocation of certain amount of time for each one, we have a question, or present their reasoning.
Yeah. Would it be cumbersome for departments to be a little flexible on time, like if we did a couple meetings where, I mean, generally, I mean, lately, we've been running a little longer, but generally, we're done by 11. If we did, like, a lunch and then just kept going for a couple meetings...
As long as it's scheduled, the directors will...
They'd be flexible on timing. What do you think about that? Just tag on to our Tuesdays and just do a full day for a couple weeks. Is there a, is Tuesday coming up?
14th to 28th or June.
Is there one in June?
14th, there's not an extra one in.
Okay. Maybe do the first meeting in July?
One in May, the 31st. But that's a holiday.
Is this enough to...
Yeah, I can get that together, and I'll find out the exact dates.
You guys want to nail it down right now, or you want to let Randy come up with the format?
Why didn't he come up with the format until it's up to time, and then we'll give our concerns about dates.
Great. All right. The other thing I have on here for poor is the monthly department reports, and this is Health Department, Human Resources, IT, Maintenance, Public Works, Solid Waste, Treasurer, and Use Services. I didn't have anything in any of those departments on their reports to specifically point out. Do you have any questions?
I have a question about the landfill. They noted in their report that they're hiring part-time people to clean up the litter that blew in the wind and all, and it just, and I know we did close one day because of wind. Was that successful closing, or did that put all the trash people in turmoil?
It was successful.
I guess my thought about all this blowing stuff out there, we need to figure out a long-term solution instead of hiring people to go all over that part of the county to pick up litter.
We can look, the challenge is, obviously, there's a lot of wind in Kansas, and we're putting up fences, but as our cells grow taller, they're going to be above the fences at some point, so I, we can look to see if there are other options, but...
What about our workforce program with either Reno County Correctional or the state? Is that considered, would that be considered an option to look at?
I can, I can talk to Megan and Randy and say if I could. Good idea.
Yeah, there needs to be some type of, on top of that schedule as we can. And after all, we looked at what, we have 14 days in April that were 40 miles an hour. We had seventh or eighth or ninth most in record this year.
But that might be the new normal, Commissioner Hurst.
Hope not.
Well, I hope not, too, but the weather patterns are changing.
Anything else for Randy? Okay. Thank you, Randy.
The only other thing, Commissioner, I just give you a quick update, I know you and Commissioner Frisian, you'd asked me to update each meeting. The, on the city-county agreements, the contracts, the city had, a couple weeks ago, sent Patrick and I their draft. We reviewed it, talked with the sheriff, made a couple minor language changes, adjustments, and Patrick sent it back to Paul last Friday, so now we're going to wait for them to see if they have any questions or concerns about the most recent draft. Things are moving on that.
Appreciate you keeping that on the topic. Commissioner, comments? Mr. Sellers, you want to go first?
Yeah, but go quickly. When will we talk about fire mitigation again, the recommendations of that task force?
That'll be in May. I believe the resolution's about ready. I believe it's very close to being ready to be presented to you guys.
Okay. How are we doing? We created a new position for scanning of information. Is that progressing well?
Yes. The, in the IT department, the employee that Mike hired is doing a great job, he's making very, making good progress.
Already mentioned the importance of the emergency management department. I can't believe how active they are and important to our community. I'm always on the sheriff for some reason or another, but the fact that they're, he's providing drone usage to emergency management is huge, huge addition to the security of our county. I'm glad that the county is providing SBA space in the courthouse for this potential disaster relief funding. Have we moved the files out of the fifth floor so that the fifth floor is ready for their remodeling project?
We are working on it. We have, been having meetings, each department has, or department or division that has files up there have been informed that it needs, they need to be removed.
You tell them that you're going to get rid of them if you don't move them, because we're not going to get that remodeled if those files are there. So they've had enough time. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurst? I had the privilege of attending to the STARS the other day in Anover, that had to do with the Kansas Department Development, Economics Development, and there were a lot of Reno County businesses honored there with, and I'm just going to, and some of them have been named already, and I hope I'm getting them all that I wrote down here, but Prairie Star Health Center, Gen Zata Pharmaceuticals, ID Tech, American Packaging, Bogies, AgTrak, Superior Boilers, Hubco, Daisy Joes and Haven, and I think there's another one, Schule and Ernest Bell, yeah, that was who Daisy Joes was. And then original-wise, there was Hyatt Life Sciences out of Sterling, and Ekfab out of Kingman, and Knight Feedlot out of Lyons. Those firms all received the South Central Kansas honors, and so I'd just like to mention those names, but thanks for job well done, and for having business here in Reno County and adjacent counties. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst. I just had a couple things. One, we're still waiting on the insurance decision on the...
Right, we expect to hear from them first week of May.
I do appreciate, you know, with a little bit of pressure, we got a little bit of a reduction on that, that new work order that was approved already, so that's good. We just, I'll talk to you after, Randy, on something. One last thing, I wanted to remind the community that elections are, the election process is upon us, and the election deadline is, I believe, June 1st. I think there's, there's now two filings for commissioners, one in Commissioner Sellers' district and one in District Four, I think, one of the new districts. So ask Jenna today to send the commission biweekly updates, so we can have those on our packet, so she's going to start doing that, but that's what she said as of today. So pretty, pretty light on filings so far in interest, but it's probably still a little early, but I wanted to remind everybody that there are opportunities to serve the community. With that, I think we'll, we'll, I'll close the regular session today, and then we're just going to take a couple minutes for a technical transition as they restart the stream for our new, for our second...